All right, we will call this meeting to order. And begin with a pledge of allegiance. If you would all please rise, remove your hats if you have one. And Mr. Liebering, if you would please lead us in the pledge. Welcome everyone to our September board meeting. I hope everyone had a very enjoyable Labor Day weekend and safe weekend. So we are here. Let's see, well, let's begin with verification of quorum.
Director Bill?
Here.
Director Cook?
Here.
Director Kimeshian? Director Doherty?
Here.
President Van Vliet?
Here.
Vice President Hormut?
Excellent. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? August 8th meeting, please.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five in favor, motion carried.
Well, with that, I know we have Director Burke in the audience. Would you like to come, please enlighten us?
I'm almost tall enough to see over the television. Yeah. Board, staff, members and guests, there's just a few items I want to cover tonight. First is, we are enjoying the highest lake level in an August that we could remember in years. And I really know for some people, it's extremely inconvenient. For us, it's a savings account. So we're really glad the lake level's high. And that's exactly what we aim to do. There's some negotiations I have made with Metropolitan and others that we're going to try and keep this lake as high as possible for as long as possible. Especially when we're looking at investing $50 to $60 million in our water treatment plant. That would be a stranded asset if we could only use it so many months a year. So we're probably going to have to get creative on how we deal with seawall repairs and some other things. But that just means we have to think differently. Not necessarily it's no, but how do we do that and do it cost effectively for everybody? So I'm sure that'll be part of future conversations. I don't think they've really started yet, but I've had a few people call me. How are they going to repair their seawalls and that? So I think maybe we need to work on maybe even just a fact sheet on different options that people currently have. And then maybe some things we can do in the future. We are embarking on a wastewater rate study at the moment. So we've engaged our rate study analyst. And he is putting together a structure basically because of chemicals, infrastructure repair and that type of thing. I don't know what that's going to look like yet. I'm just going to patiently wait and see. But should there be a rate increase that would involve a Prop 218 process, which is where we have public hearings? Every resident that uses wastewater services through EVMW would get a notice. And there is public participation. I have no idea what that's going to look like. But given how everything else has gone up, I really can't imagine it's gone down. So that's just going to be my best guess. As fall, if it ever gets here and stays, I think this weekend is supposed to be in the triple digits again. But we might want to remember to turn our sprinklers off or fewer days a week as the weather gets cooler. I would appreciate that. Again, our division is the least efficient, most wasteful, and that number keeps going up every month. The governor came up with something new and unique. We give every resident a water budget. If you look on your bill, if you open your bill and look at your bill, you're given an indoor budget and an outdoor budget. And the governor's decided that each water district's going to get a budget. So then if we go outside of our budget, whether we have local sources or imported, then there'll be fines and penalties. Not quite sure who we pay those to. I'm going to guess it's going to be the State Water Resources Control Board. We're kind of waiting to see how that goes. But at that point, and if being inefficient is going to probably be a more serious conversation. So we're just going to kind of wait and see how he delves his new plan out. And just for the record, he's never undeclared an emergency, a drought emergency. So technically, even with record rain and a recent tropical storm, we are still in drought emergency. Period. So I have no words for that. That's all I can tell you about that. Mayor Jeremy Smith and I will be hosting coffee again next Wednesday. We hope everybody comes out if you have any questions or concerns. And I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Darcy, I know a number of people have raised, they're in the ski, in the North Ski Lake, have raised some concerns about what was reported as an algae bloom, but was probably incorrectly reported because it was a duckweed. Can you enlighten us a little bit on duckweed and why it happens and what we can do about it?
So duckweed is obviously an aquatic plant that when it is fed nutrients, it blooms. The temperature has to be right, the pH and the nutrient level. When it rains, you have runoff. So any of that runoff in the hills, especially the North Ski area, it's going to bloom. And it takes about two to three days before it dissipates and sinks. The North Ski area is unique because we don't have obviously a lot of landscaping there. We do have a lot of, I'm just going to be honest here, illegal activity, homeless camps at times. So those types of things just run into the lake. That's where it goes. Managing that is very difficult. It's not like something you can just turn on and off. There's really no chemical to address duckweed nor necessarily one we'd want. The most you could do is rake it up and scoop it out. So but by the time you would probably get things moving to do that, it would probably dissipate. I know it's not aesthetically pleasing. I know there were some issues with some filters in some boats. My recommendation would be probably don't go in there until it has dissipated. It doesn't take very long. Algae is a very different substance. Duckweed, it looks like peas. If you pick it up, it just looks like a bunch of small peas in your hands. So that, but you're right. And there's not much we can do about other types of things, like when people have landscaping in the back of their house and they're on the waterfront. Or even if you're off the waterfront and you're over water and it runs down drain, it runs right into the lake. So basically, all you're doing is feeding all the things you don't like.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other public officials? Doesn't appear so. Okay, with that, we have a guest. So Charlie Magin, I'd like to invite you to come up and talk to us about the Emergency Preparedness Committee.
Can you hear me now? Good evening. First, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I know it's rare to have a non-member speak at these kind of meetings. And I appreciate the chance to be here. I'm going to read a prepared statement. It's going to be quick. I'll get out of here real quick. Okay? The Canyon Lake Emergency Preparedness Committee has been in place for over 30 years. But for the past few years, it has struggled with the loss of members. In fact, many residents and business owners don't know that it exists and what we actually do. The CLEPC has two main functions. First, we advise residents and business owners of the possible threats that they face living and working here. And we offer resources and trainings to help them organize a disaster plan for their individuals, for their households and for their businesses. Second, the CLEPC is made up of volunteers who undergo specific training and respond to simulated and actual disasters within the community. As the new membership coordinator for this CLEPC, I will be contacting all clubs in the POA to ensure that everyone that wishes for more information will have access to it. And in the process, we'll be actively recruiting for civic-minded volunteers to respond to real or simulated disasters. Anyone who is interested, they are welcome to attend our meetings. They are typically every month. With the exception of July, August and December, the first Thursday of every month, we meet at 6:30 in the City Hall downstairs, the conference room or the council room. But if you would like to contact me directly, I have a set aside web email address. It's membership four, the letter four, clepc@yahoo.com. That's it. Nice and short and sweet. Anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions or comments that we'd like to offer, please?
I'd like to ask this question. With all of the focus on wildfires, really all over the world now, and us being here in Canyon Lake with our perimeter mostly exposed to brush and so forth, BLM land. Are you shifting your focus possibly to wildfires? Because it seems to me that we're particularly vulnerable to that. And of course, we may have an earthquake and some other calamity, but wildfires seem to be front of mind for a lot of people now.
Well, we don't really focus on any particular. What we do is we try to encourage people to identify what would be a disaster for them. What I mean by that is obviously general ones, earthquakes, fires and so forth, will affect everyone. We also have people who are medically, medically fragile. That they need air conditioning or they may need electricity for a medical apparatus. A blackout for them is truly a disaster. So a disaster plan is very individualized based on the person's needs, the business needs. So that's what we're trying to do is we're trying to educate people about everything that could happen and how they can take care of theirselves, their household and their business. So hopefully that answers your question for you.
Anyone else? I haven't been involved with the Emergency Preparedness Committee for probably a couple of years, but I will, I will concur that it is a small but a mighty group that does a lot of good, particularly at a time of tremendous need. And I know all of us reflecting back on what happened in Maui recently when they were overrun so quickly by the fires. And Greg, you mentioned fires, but also earthquakes are kind of the two major natural disasters that we would face, maybe even flood. I mean, who knows? But, but the committee does a tremendous job and needs a lot of involvement from the community to just be a person to come in and help. And so if anyone is of interest, has any time to do it, I strongly encourage you to participate. Because it's a very necessary, a very necessary group and committee for, for our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, I have one announcement that I want to, that is, that is fresh off the press. So in six days, it will be September 11th. And I know all of us remember very well where we were that day, what happened that morning and what went on. And so we've got a couple of events. Our city is sponsoring an event in the morning at the town center, at the monument in the center there, from I think 8:30 to 9:30. Free coffee and donuts, but also a nice, again, a nice ceremony. We, the POA, will be sponsoring an event as well that evening. It will be from 6:30 PM to about 8:00 PM. And I'll just kind of run through what's going on on, on next Monday. It is, first of all, the focus is, is going to be, it's a, a day of remembrance. It's a day of reflection, a day of patriotism for what happened on that event, because it was so significant to us. At 6:30, we'll have a DJ playing on the, on the new patio here. From 6:30, playing patriotic music. At 7 o'clock, we will have the National Anthem sung by Joseph Luna. If you haven't heard him, he was, he is a young phenom in our community who is, who is a tremendous singer. He'll sing the National Anthem. We'll have an opening prayer by a fire chaplain. And then we'll have a couple of speeches and the lights will be lit up from 7 o'clock on that evening. And then we'll have a closing speech around, around 7:45 or so. So again, a small, kind of intimate, but very, very respectful ceremony will be held next Monday evening. And we encourage you, again, all to, to attend. With that, we'll open it up to, to the community. Would anyone, is there anyone who, do we have any members wishing to speak?
Not under member comments.
No member comments? Wow. All right. We're speechless. Very good. Well, with that, we'll move into the, into the agenda. So is there anything anyone would like to change or pull from the consent agenda? No. Okay, so there's no one, no changes to consent agenda, the two items on the consent agenda are the financial statements and the report of the executive action. Do I have a motion to, to approve it?
Yes, motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five in favor, motion carried.
It sounds like the air conditioning just went on really, really loud. Either that or a band is playing in the rear room. So with that, we will go to the first item, and Amanda Moore is coming up to talk about the appointment of security advisory committee members.
Hello, everybody. So this is an approval to add two alternate positions to the security advisory committee. Last month at the August meeting, the committee's initial recommendation was tabled for further review. So the board could understand a little more in depth, some of the background of some of the applicants. And the committee has made a new recommendation for Terry Jarvis and Mike Bowers to join the committee. So we are recommending that the Board of Directors approve that recommendation upon the execution of a confidentiality agreement.
Thank you, Amanda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Is there a second? Okay, discussion. Board members in discussion? Our comments or questions?
I'd like to bring up, we evaluated a few people along with the committee and we feel that we've got a great group coming on board. We have a guy coming on who's experienced with security contracts. And as many of you know, the security contract is coming up for renewal. So we have a guy with about 20, 25 years experience, Amanda, with the contracts. So we'll be looking at that with the security companies as we dig into this and hopefully work on our enforcement in Lake here.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. I know I participated in the second round of things and I was encouraged with the, a number of candidates we have. And it's really encouraging to see the community starting to, wanting to engage and be on committees. I think we had maybe five applicants or so, five or six? Seven applicants. And so it's really good to see. Again, we encourage the participation of, of the new members. And, and again, as always, we're, we're always impressed with the quality of the experience that people bring. And the whole purpose of having these committees is that by bringing in that additional experience from the community, it gives us not only a voice of the community, but also allows us to, to draw on the collective experience to enable this board to, and future boards to make better and more informed decisions. Any other comments, questions? Nope. With that, let's take a two out. All in favor of approving these two to the Security Advisory Committee, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five in favor, motion carried.
Okay. So next is Director Commission. Talk to us about the Green Committee Charter change, please.
Okay. Because this is a little bit involved, I'm going to read the board action item. So people get a pretty good background of where we're coming from and why we're proposing this action. The Green Committee Charter has been in place for many years and currently allows for seven members who shall be active in the golf program. Four from the general membership, who are appointed by the POA Board, and three representatives, one each selected by three major groups in the golf community. The men's golf club, the women's golf club, and the Tuesday work group. And then approved by the board. Two new clubs have grown into prominence in the golf community. The Family Golf Club and the Niners Golf Club, and would like to be considered for membership to the Green Committee. Considering how the current charter is written, denying their request could be challenged. Expanding the committee to nine members would unbalance the committee in favor of clubs and would not be in the best interest of the community. Currently, the four board appointees of the Green Committee are members of the men's club, the women's golf club, and the Tuesday work group, and the family club. No other committee for the POA has club representation as part of their structure. As a general practice, all new committee applicants are interviewed and selected by each committee and appointed by the board, Board of Directors. This system has been in place for many years and has served the community well. All Green Committee meetings are open to the community and continued club participation will always be encouraged and welcomed. The two-year, also, the two-year experience requirement for the chairman position limits the pool of applicants and is not a requirement for other committees and also should be removed. A recommendation for the board is to change the Green Committee Charter to eliminate club group representation and allow three new appointed positions to go through the normal selection process and remove the two-year experience requirement to be eligible to serve as chairman. Further recommend an effective date of January 1st of 2024 to allow time for the existing club representatives to complete their term and for the committee to promote the new openings and interview applicants. Thank you. Yeah. So with that, it's a proposal that we felt was appropriate to match the other committee charters in that don't have club representation and still allow club members in the golf community to participate in the Green Committee, especially now that we'll have three openings. That'll be open to anyone. Also, it was brought to my attention today that in, in addition, I made an amendment to the charter, but I would like to make another amendment that we, that the intent of this charter is to have equal representation with the clubs. And that is something that we cannot assure, because if the clubs don't send representatives to apply, we cannot put them on the committee. But then we're going to ask the charter, we'll say with the intent to have even equal balance or representation from the different clubs in the golf community. So that one amendment I would like to add.
All right, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All right. With that, are there any member comments? Nope, our band is back. Are there any member comments who'd like to come, if you'd like to speak on this, on this proposal? Just raise your hand and, and please come forward, state your, your name and your tract and lot. And we'll be happy to hear your position.
My name's David Nichol. I live at 1038, Lot 10. So this new way, usually we had a, a voice, the men's club, the women's club, when it comes to voting. With this new way you had present, will they be able to vote too and anything comes up at the, at the meeting to vote on?
Well, currently, the Green Committee, the four appointed members that are there that will stay on represent the men's club, the women's club, the Niners and the TWG. That's currently there. Those aren't going to change. The other three positions that are going to open up will be the goal of the Green Committee and the goal of the charter, to have equal balance amongst the other, the clubs. So that's, that's our goal, is to still have the representation. It's just not a club-appointed position. It is
I understand. And I did question this was, before, the way it was, we could, we had a voice to vote on any things that came up on a board. Do we, we still going to have that, the other people, if elected for TWG or men's club, when it comes on there, have a voice or to vote on certain issues also?
And the short answer is yes.
Okay.
The, the long answer is it, it might be different people and it's not, it's not going to be people appointed by the club. It's going to be people who take out the application.
That's what I'm talking about. Those people are going to have a right to vote?
Sorry?
Are those people that?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
All right.
They'll be, they'll be regular Green Committee members.
All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Are there any other members who would like to speak on this topic? Okay, board, board discussion? Any discussion or questions? Clarification? No? All right, let's take it to a vote. All in favor of amending the Green Committee Charter as proposed and amended? Say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Five in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is, is Carrie here? Lynn is going to speak for Carrie on, on the Canyon Lake Club Resanctioning Request.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Hopefully you can all hear me with the band. Okay, so the Canyon Lake Pickleball Club received a request from the group that they're seeking approval as a sanctioned club. So Carrie listed in this action item what the club submitted, but I think there was some, maybe some confusion about this application. So the, the pickleball club did exist. However, the pickleball club themselves reorganized. And so they resubmitted under their reorganized organization and submitted the following documents. In addition to that, there was a few items that we had asked for, asked for clarification from, from the club. So the club did submit everything in their packet. So we're recommending that the Board of Directors review the pickleball club application and make a recommendation on sanctioning effective September 5th. Thank you.
Is there a motion? To approve?
Motion to approve.
I will second this as well. Member comments? Would anyone like to speak on the Canyon Lake Pickleball Club Resanctioning Request? No. Could I ask Steve to just go press the button on that one to turn it off or not? Sure, that'd be great. Thank you. To cut it down on any interference. Any board discussion? Yes, I, I received one email. I'm going to clarify this. This is not a new pickleball club or yet another pickleball club. This is the same pickleball club as before, but it is reconstituted now as a nonprofit organization. Am I correct? I am correct. That's it. Okay. Any other comments? Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five in favor, motion carried.
All right, on to item 8.4, New Reserve Study. Eric?
Yeah, I won't read this whole thing because it's fairly lengthy, but basically, a little bit of background, the Board of Directors engaged Smart Property, which is a reserve analyst company to conduct our last 2021, 22 Reserve Study. This study reviews the association's assets and funds reserved to provide for the repair and replacement of these assets. As stated in Civil Code 5550, the study shall at a minimum include identification of the major components, identification of the probable remaining useful life of those components, an estimate of the cost of repair, replacement, an estimate of the total annual contribution necessary to set aside for those money, though, that money. And then lastly, a 30-year reserve funding plan. As required by Davis Sterling, we're required to provide a new reserve study every three years. So we are now due. And the fiscal impact for this is 29,000 for a new full quote-unquote "living" reserve study, year one, which is the exact same amount that we paid three years ago. So there's no increase in what we paid the last time we had this company do the work. And in year two and year three, we're electing to do the, their pro-plan, which includes software access and a complete financial review by the Reserve Independent Reserve Specialist. And the sum total of year one, year two and year three is $53,000. Staff recommends that the board approve engaging Smart Property for a living reserve study with onsite inspection and financial updates the following two years for a total of $53,000 to come from the Repair and Replacement Reserve Fund.
Thank you, Eric. Is there a motion to approve as proposed?
Motion. Second.
Second, great. There any member comments or questions? Anyone like to speak? Now with that,
Excuse me, President Van Vliet.
Board, Board Discussion first. Any Board Discussion or questions or comments? Uh, you want to comment? Go ahead.
One of the things I want to point out about this program is it allows us to track all of our inventory items, if you will, in real time. You know, I know some people are going to look at the price of this and say, oh, it's $50,000 plus over three years. Reality is if we weren't going with this, we'd have to hire somebody to start putting all this stuff in. So we have this in real time and that's 53,000 and spread over three years. And this is a great program and I really am looking forward to doing this. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. It is a tremendous tool. It actually reduces our our costs to generate and it allows us more real time viewing of our reserve balances and so forth. So it's, it's been a great step in the tool. It's kind of taken this whole reserve analysis and studies kind of brought us into the new millennium. And I think it's a great tool as well. So with that, since this is a financial vote, we're going to take a little different approach. We're going to ask for a roll call vote on this one. So go ahead, Harmony.
Yes, Director Bill?
Here, yes.
So we could say aye, Director Cook?
Aye.
Director Kometian?
Aye.
Director Doherty?
Aye.
President Van Vliet?
Aye.
Five in favor, motion carried.
Perfect. With that, we'll get to Amanda's backup to talk about the rule, the 28-day reading that we did last month. We're going to vote on the rule for prohibited vehicles.
So this is for GR.5.2 prohibited vehicles. And the reason it is a 28-day reading again this month is we are proposing a slight but very, what we felt was important verbiage change. I will not read the whole thing, but under proposed rule GR.5.2C, which addresses the light requirements for e-bikes, we had some feedback that some additional verbiage would clarify. And essentially, we just slightly changed this sentence to be more clear that you have to have the lights on your e-bike actually on, working. Previously, the way it was worded made it seem like you could have the lights, but not necessarily have them turned on. And we felt this was very important to clarify. So that is the only change from last month to this month. So we are recommending that the Board of Directors approve these rules for a 28-day reading.
Thank you, Amanda. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Perfect. Any comments from the members? Okay, one. I appreciate, I wonder when you're coming, Travis.
Travis Montgomery, 3863010. First, I just wanted to thank you very much for finally bringing this into a rule and and setting some parameters and things. I first talked to the board about this in January, so I really appreciate you getting to this to this point. I hope we all realize that this is just the first step. And it's a very easy step. Now comes the hard work. We live in the inland empire, which is referred to a lot of times as the IE. Well, now I think we've got to the point where we've got our own IE with this, and that's in form and in force. And I hope that maybe in the next 30 days we'll dedicate time to the in-form part. Because I don't think it would be real fair to start tomorrow with N-force. But give, give 30 days notice or so and then then really start an enhanced enforcement. I don't think it'll work if you don't have a really enhanced enforcement. And I don't know who's going to set up all those programs, whether it's going to be at the staff level or at a committee level or something, but I just, I've got some ideas I'd be happy to share with them, but I think in-force is going to be the thing. And so many times we pass so many rules and regulations and the enforcement factor isn't there. And this really is going to take it and there's nothing that'll communicate the message faster than some enforcement all over the playground, all over the wives' clubs, the husbands' clubs, whatever the clubs are, some strong enforcement will will get the word out probably better than you can do in any other fashion. But anyway, thank you very much for doing this. I I said in the beginning that it was a life and death matter as far as I was concerned, and I, and I really think so. And so far, we've lucked out and we haven't had any serious accidents. So now this, I hope we'll just add to that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Travis. We always appreciate the feedback. And anytime you want to send, send us your comments, we always welcome them. You can send it to the justboard@canyonlakepoa.com. And we welcome your, your inputs. It does again help us as we, as we go through these 28-day readings and, and final voting. Your feedback, your collective feedback always helps. So thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this? No, with that, okay, Board Discussion? All in favor of approving the 28-day read as, as written, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Five in favor, motion carried.
Next one is also Amanda. New rules for the community garden.
Okay, so the Rules Review Committee was tasked a couple months ago to get together and look at creating some rules for the common area where the new community garden is going to be. At last month's meeting, they are, they finalized the following list of rules, which are very similar to most of our other parks and beaches and amenities. You can see members will need to be in good standing, no loitering, no smoking, no profanity, no pets. We established hours for the community garden, prohibited plants that cannot be grown there, no unkempt plots and proper compost disposal. The committee also agreed that $100 as a fine for each of these rules is what they felt appropriate. And so we are recommending that the Board approve this 28-day reading to add rules GC 1.1 through GC 1.10 as attached.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second? I'll second. Any community members wish to speak? Come on up.
Same, same lot, same, same track, same name. This is an issue that I had talked with the board about for a long time too. And when I first brought it up, I was encouraged to do something on Canyon Lake Drive North by the mailboxes there, which is a very ugly area to says, don't use profanity. So it's a very ugly area. And I'm glad to see this has moved ahead and we've finally done something, but I hope we won't lose track of Canyon Lake Drive North. That's one, the single largest piece of property owned by the POA in the community, to my knowledge, and that has no improvement to it whatsoever. And it just is ugly. My other, just in looking at these rules, and I don't know if there's something that preceded this, but doesn't say anything about how I apply to get a plot, how long my plot is good for. Is that in some other kind of a document or was that in the original rules or?
Those items will likely be addressed in whatever contract ends up being required to apply for a plot. So the, the length of which you can have the plot, if there's a fee, et cetera, those details haven't quite been finalized. This is just the set of rules for the area itself.
Okay. All right, thank you. But please don't forget about Canyon Lake Drive North by the mailboxes.
And just from an information standpoint, just to let you know that that item is on our five-year plan. It is not in this year for the five-year plan. But if I go back and look for, just for information's sake, I think I have it here somewhere. Buried in here, almost there. Nope. There you go. What year is that on? Thank you. It is currently, we call it lower outrigger park is in the fifth, in the five-year plan for 2025. Fiscal 2025. Any other member comments on the garden club or the garden rules, garden, community garden rules? No? Okay, Board Discussion?
One of the rules that I would like to add, since it's a 28-day reading, it, it can be added, well, we change it, then we have to extend a 28-day reading. But if we add it now and amend it, we can approve it next month, is loud noise, something that's I'm sensitive to in the community in general, both on the lake, on the golf course. And I think we should have rules in place to limit loud noise in the areas that we work and play. So I'd like to add a rule in reference to loud noise on, on that as an amendment to the motion.
I mean, is it okay to?
Yeah, subsidiary motion, if he gets a second.
If I could just make a comment, excuse me, we can certainly do that just to provide some background. The committee did bring that up. And what their opinion was is we would just apply the general rule for noise to that area. We have a general noise rule. So that was the committee's thinking, but we could add one specifically for this area.
Would that general rule apply in the entire community? So
It's one of those redundant rules where we have it in every single section. But it could, it could apply in any common area.
And the lake and Equestrian Center and all our, all our amenities. Well, if that's the case, then there's no need for it, but we can certainly control, you know, limit the rules in the other areas. Thank you.
Motion dies, subsidiary motion dies, so we can go back to your original?
Original, same, I think we're staying with the original motion. Any other comments? Board members? I have one. And that is, I just asked about the gardening hours, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, since it is adjacent to two residences. I just wonder if it isn't, why, why didn't we consider going, say sunrise to sundown? As opposed to people milling around maybe outside your, your, your house either before the sun comes up at 6:00 in the morning or, or after sundown until, say, 10:00 PM? Can you maybe let me know, was that considered and was there any discussion on that?
Yeah, there was actually, and we, the committee got a lot of help from a few of the garden club members. I see some here tonight. And the consensus was we didn't think the gardeners were going to get real rowdy and loud in that area. And so the committee decided to keep it consistent with the other park and amenity hours.
My concern isn't about, about them being loud, but just the presence, because this goes edge to edge, right adjacent to two homes. And I'm just concerned if that was my home, that I might see a strange man in dark clothing just over my fence, early in the morning or late at night, that might become a frightening situation. And I know maybe the rule was put in there because that's when we checked most of our, our parks. I think this one's a little different. So I'd like to make a subsidiary motion that we change that to sunup to sundown. Is there a second on that?
Second.
He seconded. Okay. Anyone else have, want to debate that or discuss that further? No? So, so, so the, what we would be voting on, and again, I don't want to force this through if there's any disagreement, is to take this written but modify number GC.1.6 to be sunrise to sunset.
I do, I have a comment.
Yeah, please.
It sounds great in the summer, but in the winter, when it's dark at 5:00 and people are trying to get home. I mean, if you wanted to limit it to 8:00 PM, I think that would probably be a good compromise instead of 10:00 PM. But I think about winter hours when it's dark at 6:00 AM and dark at 5:00 PM.
From a procedural standpoint, tell me if this is appropriate and correct. And that is, since it's a subsidiary, it's an amended motion. Is it, are we allowed to take member comments on this?
According to your policy, you can take comments.
Okay. Are there any member comments? Anyone from the community who would like to comment on this to give us a perspective?
Is there anyone from the garden club that would like to, yes? Chris Papavero. The sunup to sundown makes sense. It's not like we're going to be out there doing any planting, any gardening when it's dark. I do understand that the homeowners that are there, one of the things that we kind of wanted to do as a garden club is to reach out to both those homeowners and just kind of let them know what we're doing. Some of them have already come by. They've, they've talked to us, but we haven't really talked exactly to those two neighbors. They're not there all the time, but that is a a good thing to do to reach out to them. But the sunup to sundown, since those houses were there before the garden club came in or the garden center, it just makes sense to do a sunup to sundown and not to disturb their peace. Thank you.
Would that be a restriction in the winter? Is that, is that a sundown too restrictive in the winter from a gardening member's perspective?
When I'm gardening, if it's dark, I'm in the house. You know, and, and that's kind of a common thing anyway. You know, nobody's going to be out there with flashlights. It's, it's not, it's not going to break or make that garden area if it's, if it's sunup to sundown.
Thanks for giving us your opinion. That helps. Thank you.
Could I make a suggestion to maybe do summer and winter hours like some of our other parks? Maybe we could do summer and winter hours like some of our other parks?
What would that look like?
I believe summer hours at most of the parks are until 10:00. So we could maybe do eight as a, as a middle ground for summer and then maybe winter shorten that up.
So should we go sunrise to 8:00 PM? Is that what's the subsidiary, subsidiary motion is now?
You'll have to.
Oh, make a new one. Alex, why don't you make a new one?
You have a, you have a second. So I believe you have to, we could do a roll call vote. And if it fails, you can make another motion.
Okay, so all in favor of the original subsidiary motion, which is sunup to sundown, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Opposed.
Nay, nay.
Opposed.
One in favor, four against, motion fails.
Bear with us as we deal with our new, with our process. Okay, is there another subsidiary motion?
Subsidiary motion to have it from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM for the hours for the garden club, the garden park. I'm sorry, sunrise to 8:00 PM.
Second.
All right. So it was so the motion is to accept it as amended and the amendment would be section 1. GC.1.6 hours. Gardening hours are sunrise to 8:00 PM. Any more discussion on that? Okay.
More a question than do you really want people in there at 5:15 AM?
We said sunrise, yeah.
Yes, sir. I mean, that's very subjective. 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM gives you a parameter. You know, I was just saying to Valerie, gee, you come home from work when it's winter and you want to go over and pick a couple of tomatoes for dinner. And you go at 6:00 because it was dark at 5:00, but no, you can't go because it's dark with sunup to sunrise. It doesn't mean you're going to be in there gardening. But you do grow that stuff to eat and you may want to drop by at 6:30 when you get home from work with a flashlight and pick your tomatoes and go home. So I just wouldn't be as subjective, wouldn't be my.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the board members? Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve as amended with gardening hours from sunrise to 8:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
That was hard. Five, five in favor, no opposed. The amended, as amended.
Are all in favor?
All in favor. Ultimately.
I thought we had two against.
No, they were just late.
Okay. Five in favor, motion carried.
Who knew board meetings could be so entertaining, right? Thank you, Amanda. All right, and with that entertainment, let's, uh, turn it over to our general manager, Eric Kazakoff.
That was fast again. But I'm ready for you this time. Um, I want to thank our activities department and operations department for putting on another fantastic Maui Sunday. Um, I wasn't here, but I understand that the turnout was, was awesome and that it was another great event. I have been to that event and I really enjoyed it, but I'm sorry I missed it this year. Um, the bill mentioned we have a nine 11 tribute, uh, on Monday and Bill covered that. But, um, events will start six 37 o'clock, so we urge people to show up for that. Uh, next concert here in the Holiday Bay room is the fabulous Thunderbirds on November 4th. Still have tickets for that. The driving range restoration project improvements are being made under the new solar structure, new concrete, uh, for the driving range mats. Uh, there will be an area of artificial turf and planters and a seat wall, so that's progressing nicely. The Holiday Harbor dock replacement, the courtesy dock near the fish weighing station, um, on the east side of Holiday Harbor Park is currently being built. And that is scheduled for installation in November, and that will have additional courtesy dock spaces than the one now. And, uh, last week, in keeping with our architectural, board approved architectural standards that were passed a couple of years ago, the guard shacks and the restroom building, the three buildings at the main gate were painted, um, white. And our goal is to eventually paint all the POA common buildings with that same color scheme, matching the, the, um, monument signs at the main gate and the other monument sign at Eastport. So, uh, that got painted last week, it looks really nice and fresh. And, uh, really good news, we got about an hour ago, we passed our health department inspection, uh, at the renovated bar. And our current plan is to open for a soft opening on Monday for nine 11. So if you go to the nine 11 event, uh, that the city's hosting in the morning and you come early for, uh, the evening, uh, tribute that we have here, uh, we plan to be open for business there. And we're excited for everybody to see that remodel, uh, following, opening the bar, uh, we will, I'm looking to complete the patio, most of the patio construction by the end of this month. And so that completes phase one of the project. We're probably going to turn the restaurant, now that we have an opening date for the bar, uh, I'm going to let the contractor start doing demo and renovations inside the restaurant. So if we open the bar on Monday, I would say Monday on, we will probably be closing the lighthouse restaurant, uh, for the duration of the restaurant renovation. And so we'll be serving dinner in the newly renovated restaurant and the lounge. And, um, depending when the furniture comes, which is October for the patio, uh, we'll also be serving, um, dinner out on the patio. So we're excited for all of that and, um, making some progress. The pickleball court addition is also going well and looking forward to opening that later this fall. And our pavement project, uh, gave the board an update on this today. We're doing $7.8 million worth of paving in our year two paving project, and we're planning on starting that in October. And, uh, just watch our communications, we'll be letting everybody know when we're coming to your area. For the most part, it's the Longhorn side of the community. And that's all I have tonight, thanks for coming.
Thank you, Eric. With that, uh, if you haven't had a chance, please go through your package. There's a lot of great material that's in there from, uh, staff on, uh, community patrol statistics and all the things that our communications team has done. And I encourage you to, to look through for that information. With that, let's, uh, let's turn it over to the board for closing comments. And, uh, Jeff, why don't you lead us off?
Maui Sunday was pretty great, but I was curious, Eric or Bill, if anybody knew how much was raised, um, for the, uh, victims of that fire.
I don't know the exact, I know it's thousands, we raised thousands, um, in support between the efforts that the POA, the city and, and, uh, and in particular, the yacht club, uh, have, have done, they've done, yacht club really took a, a strong leadership position in raising a lot. And I know thousands were raised, they'd already gone back and, and flew s- a, a number of supplies back to the, uh, men, women and children, um, who are homeless now and, uh, and have been taking actually envelopes full of cash. Because now one of the things in Maui, their, their communication networks are down, so they can't use Zelle and they can't use electronic means of payment. So they only take, a lot of places are only taking cash. Uh, and so they were handing out envelopes of $200 cash that, which were, which, you know, they were, people would cry when they got those. So again, kudos to the, uh, to the yacht club who, who made, uh, all that happen.
And also like to, um, bring up a couple of things, the Canyon Lake Chamber of Commerce has a battle of the Canyon Lake businesses coming up. That is going to be, uh, in Sierra Park from 10 to two on September 30th. Um, as far as I know, the POA cornhole team is still undefeated. So if you, uh, if you want to challenge them, they'll be there. I mean, they are one and zero right now, they haven't lost to anybody. They're going to have tug of wars, potato sack, uh, piggyback, um, cornhole, arm wrestling and limbo. So, um, be great if, uh, people can go out there and support our chamber, they do a lot for the community. In addition to that, tomorrow morning at seven 15 at the Canyon Cowboy is the Chamber of Commerce Business Roundtable. And it goes from seven 15 to eight 30. And I know that if anybody's involved at the chamber, uh, John Grandi texted me and said he would love to see everybody there that can make it. So last but not least, I want to let people know regarding the motorcycle security. There, honestly, there is no designated motorcycle parking other than a shade structure out by the Eastport. The area over there, people have been parking there because they have to park somewhere. We are actively looking and have subcommittees working on developing a safe way of parking the motorcycles. We have put more cameras up there. We are looking, and we put a committee, subcommittee together with the FPC and the Security Committee, and we are moving forward on that as fast as we can. That is not a promise that anything's going to happen, we're trying to make something happen, but there are no promises at this point. But in the interest of transparency, we want to let you know that we are working on that. And, um, that's about it.
Uh, thank you, Jeff. Joe?
Well, um, I'm just recently got back from five days in Morro Bay and, uh, enjoyed the nice, cool temperatures while you guys are roasting here. And you're welcome because we brought some of that cool weather back with us, so hope you're enjoying that. No, I'll be, I'll be home this weekend. Um, I've got a few committees that I report on, uh, senior center. Um, they're, um, they're looking forward to getting some security cameras. Um, they could use, use a little bit of security protection around the, around the community because the building isn't occupied all the time and it's somewhat vulnerable. So look forward to getting those cameras in place. The generator that has been, uh, talked about for quite a while is finally in plan check and, uh, waiting for a per issue for a permit, so that should happen as well. Green Committee is working on drought tolerant projects and, uh, finalizing details on, uh, the map for the golf course. And look forward to seeing some of that work start, uh, real soon. Uh, TWG is still on break, but I think their next meeting, uh, is October. So I'll be reporting the results of that meeting next month. Uh, then that, that's my report for tonight, thank you all.
Thank you, Joe.
Alex?
Uh, guys, thank you. Um, a couple of things I want to kind of highlight, make sure it gets set. Uh, I believe it's, uh, just want to pull it up, so make sure I say, September 23rd, it's coming up around the corner. Um, want to thank the, uh, the Guild for providing a free concert that's going to be going on, um, right over here. Um, so you're going to have a, a Journey Tribute Band and another band called Audio Blast. So that's going to start at one o'clock and I think it goes to like eight. Um, is that right, Chris? Okay. So Fun Times is a free concert, so you could either bring your boat out there or you can golf cart. It's a fun time and it's a great give back to the community that the Guild does every year. I know that I look forward to, it's not often, you can sit on the boat and live, listen to live music, so it's pretty awesome. Uh, I sit on two committees right now, I sit on the finance committee. I just, I just want to say these, some of the most intelligent people that we have working in committees are sitting in that committee. They really do their homework, they're really doing a good job. Uh, I just want to let you know, budget wise, um, we review the budgets every single month and go over the numbers from the previous month. And, um, every department does an incredible job of staying within their budget and so forth. So some great things financially, um, as we look forward and if you look back, you know, five years ago versus today, um, we are, we look much better than we used to. Um, Rules and Regulations Committee, you saw that we, um, put some rules together with, uh, the garden club. Uh, maybe it took us a little time to get the right time, right? But, uh, we got that going. But, uh, the Rules and Regulations Committee is also working on revising and going through the entire 170 pages of rules and trying to reduce that 170 pages to something that's actually readable. Um, so it's been an ongoing project, I think we're six months into it. Um, but Amanda and her team and, and everything, um, we're not far from being able to, um, present it to everybody. It's just going to simplify it, there's a lot of places where like present, noise is a perfect example that was brought up earlier. It's in every park, you have a noise rule of golf field, you have a golf, a ru- rules field or rules for noise at every single park. There's no reason if we already have it as a general rule to have it in every single spot. So we're trying to, uh, just consolidate it because we feel like the new, new members are, that are moving in the community are not doing, you know, reading every single rule. I don't think any of us probably have it any, maybe one time. So we're just trying to consolidate that and make it much more simplistic. Um, outside of that, it was, uh, it's nice to see that, uh, summer is winding down, kids are back in school. I will say that I have seen less people on e-bikes causing harm. Um, and I know for a fact, just because I have friends that have kids, um, they are getting tickets. So Patrol has been stepping up their game and, uh, I just know that from my friends, my, they're complaining about their kids getting tickets. So I know it's happening up there, I feel like we're moving the needle, it might be slow, but the needle's moving. Um, I'm asking everybody, um, we really need to peer pressure, educate your neighbors, educate your friends, that this is a huge safety thing for our community. So it really takes a, a village to raise kids and that's what makes this community great. So let's all pull together and see if we can do it together. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Alex.
Greg? So I too was in Northern California this past week and met with a lot of old friends and family. And some of those old friends I hadn't seen for many years. And they said, why Greg and Julie, where are you living now? Oh, we live in Canyon Lake, well, tell us about that. And so I spent a little bit of time telling them about living here since 2015. And well, we have a lake and we have an equestrian center and a pool and a great lodge, it's now being, um, rehabilitated. And, uh, after all that, they said, wow, you must really live in a great place. And I thought about that for a second and I said, you know, they're, you're right. We do live in a great place and I, I, again, stepping out, stepping away for a week and not hearing all of the, the, the carping that goes on here sometimes, uh, and thinking about what a great place we do live in. I was pretty thankful to hear my, my friend say, you must live in a great place. And I said, yeah, I think we do. I'd also like to, um, congratulate the garden club for taking another small step for gardeners tonight. That was a great thing and you, you're getting there. Uh, some of you may have seen on Facebook, the, I've seen Chris's and Kelly's picture up there, but you're building the beds and hauling them over there and putting them up, a lot of work, but you're making progress. I congratulate you on that. Uh, the last thing is, you know, everybody talks about our committees, not great they are. And I certainly believe that they're the fabric of our, our community and contributed a lot. But a lot of people don't know about one committee that's called IDR, which is Internal Dispute Resolution. And I have the great pleasure of serving with Joe Comission on that committee. We, we're kind of in the background and nobody, I bet a lot of people don't really know what, who we are, what we do. But to reinforce the fact that that job and this job for all of us up here is a volunteer position. The IDR meeting tomorrow, with Joe and I received our agendas for today, we get a package similar to this. And the IDR preliminary, uh, the prep package for us tomorrow is 550 pages. So you all know what I'll be doing tomorrow. Tomorrow morning over my coffee and maybe my second coffee. But, uh, again, it's, it's a privilege to serve on that committee, Joe and I really enjoy it. Um, and they always say, well, don't worry, Greg, anybody that comes before you in this committee, they'll never vote for you. So also true, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, I'll close with just a couple of comments. One is, um, one of our former POA board members and a great guy, uh, passed away last month. Her name is Phil Hoggett, if you haven't heard, um, Phil was a great, uh, a great guy. Um, again, served, served on our board as a volunteer, uh, lived up on, uh, on, by the North Lake there. I got to know him by playing tennis with him and just a, a super all around guy. And so he's, he'll be dearly missed, we certainly appreciate all of his contributions to the community. And, uh, our thoughts and prayers are with his family during this, this time of loss. Um, like that, other than that, I, the, our, my fellow board members and Eric have kind of covered all the good stuff. I will just add one thing, and that is on the, the, uh, the two committees that, uh, one is the Architectural Control Committee, the, uh, they're playing hooky tonight. There's no, there are no appeals after tonight, so, uh, but, uh, but that is not to say they don't do an absolutely Herculean job. They, every Tuesday and Thursday, they are in there preparing hundreds of, of, uh, of appeals or, 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 uh, submittals for, for modifications to homes and so forth. And they, uh, and they do a tremendously hard and, uh, and good job for the community in, in terms of making sure that everyone, you know, submits their plans and, and does them within the, uh, our, our CCNRs and so forth. So hard, very hardworking group, thank, thank, uh, all of them for, for their hard work. Um, also, I'm the liaison on the Security Advisor Committee. And in the last month, there, there's kind of three significant things that they did. One is they, they created a, uh, a test, um, for the e-bikes. So when, when the, when we go through invite or vote on the rules, one of the things that, uh, people will have to do whenever we set the effective date, is they will have to register all of their bikes. Uh, and part of registering the bike means you have to take a test and the test, they'll have to go through that. So the Security Committee did create a, a test, it'll be very similar to what we go through right now with our marine patrol when we register our boats. And then it'll be a, a bank of questions and, and you'll have to answer all those and, and get a passing grade in order to get registered. Um, so they did that, they also, a pretty exciting thing they've been doing for a number of months now is they've been working, uh, with other communities and with the Riverside Sheriff's Office for, uh, to create a neighbor, a pilot neighborhood watch program. And so we have one of our communities where, where one of the members is selected to, to champion the, uh, the effort to get together and, and talk to all the homes in, in, in that small neighborhood. And they will be having a community watch, a neighborhood watch, uh, program that will be piloted. We're, we're starting with that to see how successful it is and, and use that then as a recommendation that we might, uh, replicate throughout other parts of the community. And then finally, uh, one of the big things that we have is this board is our, our Community Patrol, uh, contract is up in March of next year. And so, uh, we have the, uh, we've created a subcommittee of the Security Advisory Committee to help assist and do some of the heavy lifting and research and analysis and evaluation of the communities and so forth to help our staff in creating an RFP for that, that effort, uh, to go out, um, either later this year or early next year. And so that's, uh, that's all the things that our Security Committee has on their, on their plate. With that, I want to thank everyone for attending. Uh, appreciate your attendance here, both in physically and online. And, uh, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone want to stay? No, perfect. All right, good night, guys.